All right, good evening and welcome to this candidate forum hosted by the Johnson County Post featuring candidates vying for four seats on the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. The candidates who are here, we'll give them a chance to introduce themselves shortly, and I believe there's another candidate who is on his way, so we hope that he gets here soon enough. My name is Kyle Palmer. I'm the editor of the Johnson County Post, and I'm honored to be the moderator for this forum. This is the fourth night of 12 nights of local forums that we have for city council, school award, and college board of trustee races. That will be on the November 4th ballot, so we do appreciate you being here, taking some time in your evening to hear what these candidates have to say, and of course, thank the candidates as well for being here. The Post has done these types of events pretty much every year nearly since our founding in 2010 as the Prairie Village Post, and we do believe this is kind of the heart of what we do, our bread and butter. They allow our readers and the residents of Johnson County a chance to hear from the people who would represent them in their communities, see if their priorities and positions match up with their priorities and positions, and be more informed when they go to the polls. If you are a subscriber to the Post, I want to thank you. It's your support that allows us to put on events like this. We would not be able to do our annual election coverage without your ongoing support, and most of our revenue indeed comes from our nearly 8,000 paying subscribers. If you do not currently subscribe, either in the room or watching online, consider a $1 one-month trial offer at JohnsonCountyPost.com. You can go there, sign up for it, put your email in, and then no obligation to go after that. You can cancel anytime, but check us out and see if we're worth the price. We think we are. A big thanks to Johnson County Library. Come on in, Mark, you can go ahead and take a seat. A big thanks to Johnson County Library, who is co-sponsoring this event tonight at Central Resource Library in Overland Park. The Johnson County Library is helping us put on several nights of forums between now and when early voting begins at select locations on October 25th. We want to thank the folks at the library for all their help and support. Of course, we're also live streaming this and all the other forums we're doing this fall, and we plan to keep these videos up on our Facebook page as well as our YouTube channel, Between Now and Voting and Beyond. So voters, if you have to leave early tonight, or weren't able to be here, or can't watch all of it tonight, you can go back and check out and see what the candidates say anytime between now and November 4th. And of course, I also want to thank the candidates who are here tonight. Running for office is time-consuming and labor-intensive, and you are seeking a position that will impact our readers, and we appreciate you giving some of your time to help voters understand your positions on the important issues that matter to them. Well, the format for this forum is similar to other forums. If you've been to our events before, we'll give the candidates first a chance to introduce themselves with one-minute opening statements. This forum features candidates vying for JCCC Board of Trustees. There are four seats up for grabs, so the top four vote-getters in this race will win seats. There are three incumbents who are here tonight, a fourth seat currently held by Melody Rail, who took over for Joy Coaston midterm, but she's not running for a term outright, so that fourth seat will be filled by whoever wins. So four seats up for grabs here. Following opening statements, after they introduce themselves, they're going to get a series of questions from me that I've prepared based in part on reader feedback that we've gotten via email over the past few weeks, as well as index cards. So if you have an idea that you want me to ask about, you can pass it to Leah here. She's going to be circulating around the room, and she'll pass it up to me, and if I see some common themes or some major issues that I don't have planned to ask about, I'll try to ask about it before we leave. After questions, we might have time for closing statements, but we've also learned that closing statements just kind of like reiterate what they've already said, and we'd rather spend time focusing on issues, and sometimes these forums can get kind of long, so I might eschew closing statements. I'll make that clear, whatever the final question will be. I'll also say for the candidates, if there's an opportunity for rebuttal, if there's a candidate up here who mentions another candidate by name, or it's clear who they're talking about, might offer that other candidate a chance to rebut for up to 30 seconds. But there's a lot of you, and there's a lot of issues that we want to get to, so I'm not going to do extended back-and-force between individuals, but just want to know that if the opportunity arises, might offer it to that other candidate. All right, well, let's start with opening statements. We drew lots to begin, and as it so happens, Carlton Abner got the number one, and so we'll just go left to right as you view it down the aisle, and then after that, we'll take rotating turns about who goes first on questions. And so 60 seconds to introduce yourselves, and we'll start with Carlton Abner, just to my left.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. Thank you to the Johnson County Library for hosting this, and Kyle, thank you, and to the Post for arranging this opportunity to speak to you all. And thank you all for tuning in and showing up. My name is Carlton Abner. I think I'm uniquely positioned for this particular role. I have over 25 years of military experience. I'm a doctoral-prepared professional, currently working in higher ed right now as a vice provost at the nation's fourth-largest medical school. And the other thing is, you know, I sincerely care about what our college students are facing right now. I sincerely care about what this resource is, and my goals here are essentially to make sure that that resource stays affordable to our students, that that experience is meaningful, and that it also remains affordable to taxpayers here in Johnson County.
That's Carlton Abner. We'll go again, left to right down the aisle as you look at them. So Chad Carroll is next. Chad, give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Thank you so much, Kyle, and the Johnson County Post, and the Johnson County Library, and everyone who's watching and here this evening. My name is Chad Carroll. I am a husband and father of three. Our family has lived in Johnson County for the past decade, and I've been in the Kansas City metro area my entire life. I went to public school in South Kansas City, Missouri. I attended Longview Community College and obtained my associate degree, and then I went to Columbia College to earn my bachelor's degree in business administration. I've had the pleasure of being in the financial industry for over 13 years in various leadership roles, so it is safe to say that education has played a pivotal role in my life. Johnson County Community College is a premier institution, and we must continue fostering a community that supports investment in education and workforce development. I plan on collaborating with the faculty, staff, and community to ensure our students are successful. Thank you.
Thank you to Chad, and we'll move down the line, and now hear from Jerry Charlton.
Thank you.
If you just move the microphone just a little bit closer to you.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate the Post putting this event on. Thank you for your attendance today. I'm a fifth-generation Johnson Countyan. I have a lot of family in this area. I'm a career professional engineer, general contractor. I chose my career well. I love what I do. I love providing solutions to my clients, and I'm passionate about what I do. You know, my career dovetails perfectly into what Johnson County is about. It's about a trade school. The number-one hiring jobs in today's market is analytical and technical, and that's my background. And I want to share my passion in the twilight of my career with our college students locally.
And thank you to Jerry. We'll move the microphone just a little bit to the left and give Lee Cross a chance to introduce himself. Lee?
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you for everyone for being here, and for the Post for putting this on, and for everyone watching online. I'm Lee Cross. I'm a seventh-generation Johnson Countyan and a business owner, a lawyer, and my family lives in Overland Park. I'm running for Johnson County Community College for the fourth time, although my consultants say never run for reelection because it's not popular. So I do thank the people for the three previous terms. I'm running for the college because it's very important to me, and I think I've proven that in a track record that we've built. My entire family went here and helped carry us out of poverty, and we've built and maintained critical relationships with many strategic partners at the college, with BNSF, and Career Tech, with hospitals, medical providers, the police academy, fire training, and we helped, a few of us here at the table helped bring Panasonic to Soto. We deliver a high-quality service, teaching people to learn and earn good jobs, and I don't think there's a better way to teach people to do for themselves. So thank you all for being here, and I appreciate you.
Thank you to Lee Cross. We'll go down to the next candidate, and that's Mark Hamill. Mark, give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, everyone who showed up, everybody who pays attention to this process. So I'll say, my love for Johnson County.
Make sure your microphone is on. There's a button on there. Make sure that the green light is on.
My love for Johnson County Community College started with my grandma, who came to college later in life. My mom went eventually, and then I also went to Johnson County Community College where I graduated. I believe the college has changed many lives, my personal ones and people I've known, many people across the community, and I just love the college, and this is really how I ended up starting to serve in this role. I think, I'll tell you, my record that I think is really important is every year I've been on there, I've always supported not to raise tuition. I've always voted not to raise tuition. I think it's critical that education is affordable for every single person that wants to attend college, and every year I propose to go wherever neutral, because I do not want to be a burden on the taxpayers of Johnson County, and I believe we can continue all the great things the college is doing and just do it a little more efficiently, and that's really what I'm focusing on. This is a gem of Johnson County. This is the cultural center of Johnson County, and you know, we talk about education as the future, our future. It is really their future that we're working on and focusing on, and I'm doing this not only for my kids, but for your kids and grandkids as well.
Thank you to Mark, and we'll shift the microphone to Jeff Holton. Jeff, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure, and I'm going to change it up a little bit on my introduction. I'm Jeff Holton, and my bio is at holtonfortrustee.com. The reason I'm here is I'm drawn to the mission of Johnson County Community College, which is to inspire learning, to transform lives, and strengthen communities. I've read many stories. I've read the story of Grace receiving her Associates of Arts from Johnson County two days prior to graduating from high school. This was made possible by the College Now program. Furthermore, she was able to graduate from Kansas State in two and a half years. I've read the story of Jasmine, who graduated from high school while also completing a 32-hour certificate in welding through the career program at Johnson County. This makes her ready for a career as many students are just starting college. I've also read the story of Spencer, who found Johnson County as he was aging out of the foster care system. You talk about barriers to higher education. Well, this guy graduated as Associates of Arts and Liberal Arts. As a 25-year business owner, I have the appropriate experience to manage people, approve budgets, set policy, and plan. However, it is these stories and many others that inspire me, parents, communities, and students. It would be an absolute honor to serve the Johnson County community on this board, and I will wake up each day in the service of others to ensure that our college continues to innovate as a leader, and these stories continue to be written.
Thank you, Jeff Holton, and the final candidate who's here, all the way furthest to my left, is Dawn Ratan. Give you a chance to introduce yourself, Dawn.
Good evening, everybody. It has been my honor to serve as a trustee for Johnson County Community College. In that time, I've helped keep tuition stable, lowered the mill levy, supported workforce expansion programs, and in the same time, enrollment has increased, and the college has continued to be a workforce engine in our community. I'm running for reelection because I believe in the mission of JCCC, because education transformed my life. From a childhood where college felt out of reach, to earning an engineering degree and building a career and owning a business, I want every student to have that same opportunity for affordable, high-quality education. I've met working parents, recent high school grads, veterans, and career changers, all striving for a better future. Their determination plus our outstanding faculty and staff inspire me every day. I'm data-driven, collaborative, and committed. My priorities are clear: protect access and affordability, support innovation, and keep students at the center of every decision. Thank you to the Johnson County Post and library and attendees here tonight. I would love to earn your vote for reelection, and you can find my bio on my website. Thank you.
So thank you to the candidates for your opening statements. I will also note, there is an eighth candidate in this race, I had to count. Kenny Stokes, I conversed with him. He's a busy guy. He's a pastor, he's a football coach, and he said it really was not going to be a weeknight that was going to work for him, and we don't do forums on weekends, and so that was, he's busy, and so the invitation was extended. I just wanted to make that clear. But there are eight candidates in this race. Again, the top four vote-getters will win seats on the board come November. All right, let's get to some questions. Opening statements began with Carlton, and so we'll start questions with Chad, and then go down the line and come back to Carlton. This will be a little bit longer, 90 seconds, but give you a chance to add on to or expound from your opening statements. You told us a little bit about yourselves, but tell us about what you see as the biggest priority for JCCC over the next four years. What is it to you, and how would you work to tackle that if elected? We'll start with Chad Carroll, 90 seconds.
Thanks for the question, Kyle. I believe the biggest opportunity over the next four years is the enrollment cliff, and I believe that with the College Now program and workforce development, we should focus on these programs, expand these programs, and make sure that we are working and collaborating with all of the high school districts within Johnson County, as well as outside Johnson County, to spread this College Now program, because stories like Jeff was mentioning are amazing, and it will also give the opportunity to help students understand that they can start at JCCC instead of going off to a four-year college, and we also should coordinate with local businesses to expand workforce development as well. Thank you.
Moving on to Jerry Charlton. Again, the biggest priority you see for JCCC over the next four years, how you would work to tackle it if elected?
Well, with my background, I believe the STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and math are the more important.
Move the microphone just a little bit towards you.
So with my background, and as I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, the number-one hiring jobs out in the marketplace today are analytical and technology. So the programs being offered by Johnson County Community College, the STEM programs particularly, science, technology, engineering, and math, I think are pivotal in our youth's growth and opportunity. A little bit more about myself, growing up, I want to, I had a misstatement in my last, in the forum at Johnson County Community College. It was a little emotional for me. I was talking about my parents. There's a scholarship endowed in my mother's name, Betty Charlton. I mentioned that she was an administrative assistant at Johnson County Community College. She was not. She was administrative assistant at Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, and it's the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce that has a scholarship endowed in her name. Just an incredible lady, and I'll talk about and probably touch on my background in what led me to being an engineer and my other brothers and sisters and what they do. They're all very artistic in their professions.
Lee Cross, the question about the biggest priority, or maybe even frame it as a challenge for JCCC over the next four years, what would you do to tackle it if you go back to the board in your case?
Yes, thank you. I sure do hope that people return me for another four years. I'm asking for one, another term. I think the biggest challenge, and thank you for the question, is candidly that we can't feed, house, and clothe or educate everyone in Johnson County. So there's a lot of tension between us and the rest of the state, whether it's the zest and zeal in the rest of the state to have a statewide mill levy and redistribute money out of Johnson County, much like the K-12 formula works. In other words, it's protecting Johnson County from any political wind. Jeb Bush, Ted Cruz, and other Republicans have all come to the college and want to use it as a foundation and any kind of marketing or outreach that they're doing, and many other Democrats have used it, and I'm proud of that, that we are a place where people come together to improve their lives. So I think protecting the funding formula, and we thank the taxpayers for what they put forth, but there's a lot of animosity in the legislature and from even fellow members of higher ed and jealousy of what we have. So it's just promoting what we do, promoting what we can do for people, and then, you know, I had another point. It was that I just protecting the college and making sure our students get the best possible education, so.
Mark Hamill, the same question to you. What do you see as the biggest priority or challenge for JCCC over the next four years? How would you tackle it if reelected in your case?
Yes, thank you. It's really hard to come up with just one. I will say, obviously, everything that's been brought up is an issue, an opportunity for us. The declining enrollment cliff that we're looking at, could possibly be an issue for us. Right now, it's actually looking pretty good for our situation, but many other colleges are going to see something a lot more tougher to deal with than us. But I do want to make sure those students, those College Now we're getting in high school, I'd love to see them catch, and have to come to Johnson County and get the experience here for at least another year before they go off to four-year. I do believe dollar-for-dollar is the best education you could find. I can't imagine something better across America. AI is a really big one that I haven't heard yet. I'm really concerned about what's going to happen to education, how it's going to affect the job market, and it's going to be so dynamic and so fast-moving, I don't think we really even understand what's going to happen, and we're going to find this out maybe semester by semester, year by year. That's something we've really got to be focusing on and trying to make sure we get this right to help education, and again, help them find their right career. There's also areas in our program, our medical, our EMT, we really have to be looking at expansion on those. We have a growing aging population, and we have to be looking at that, so we've got to make sure we have enough people ready to jump into those areas as we go through these processes, and we just got to make sure we're ready to expand every single place, and then we also have to do the really tough stuff that's not much fun. We have to make sure we look for those areas that do need to be cut, and every so often we have to cut a program here and there, and it's not fun to do, but it is one of the hardest parts about the job, but it is one of the most important ones. And we cut these programs that are becoming smaller, so we can make sure we impact the community the best by having the areas that need the most growth.
Move that microphone just to the left for Jeff Holton. Jeff, the question to you. What's the biggest priority you see for JCCC over the next four years? How would you tackle it?
Yep, so one of the things, you also mentioned challenge as well, so like one of the biggest challenges.
Challenge issue, yeah, however you want to frame it.
So to Lee's point, I think local control is a huge deal for us. I think it's important that we are maintaining the dollars that we make and spend here on our institutions here in Johnson County. Secondarily, as everybody's mentioned and everybody's talked about, Johnson County Community College is a gem, but when you are the leader, or you're in the pack of leaders, there are always people that are trying to track you down. And in my company, we work with some of the largest global brands around, and they don't maintain that leadership role by just saying, hey, we're number one. They're always the ones that are setting the standard. What's the next thing? So when we talk about AI and things of that nature, how are we going to harness AI for the best-case scenarios here? How are we going to be the leaders that are setting the standard for what we're going to be doing with whatever the innovations are? That's what I see as the biggest challenge, is maintaining that leadership role requires that investment in the future and that vision for the future.
Staying on that end of the table, Dawn Ratan, the biggest priority or challenge, however you want to frame it, that faces JCCC over the next four years?
I have five points. As others have mentioned, the decline in traditional age students and traditional methods of learning. So we've got to learn how to capture non-traditional students and be very creative, as well as the traditional methods of learning. We've got to get more digital infrastructure, which includes simulation labs, virtual reality, and AI. Secondly, we do, as other people have talked about, the workforce. Healthcare, IT, advanced manufacturing, and skilled trades have shortages right now, and so we need to, again, figure out how to get those students in and get them out to those careers quickly to fill those gaps. A lot of students, what we have started to learn is students need what we call at the College 360 wraparound services, and that, we already have childcare at the school, we've increased our mental health support, but I think increasingly, our students need that to feel like they can fit in, stay there, and belong. The fourth point is, of course, we have to stay accessible. We have to stay affordable. That is a given for our college. And then finally, we are about to enter into another phase of our master plan, and our last master plan was delivered, I believe, on time and sometimes early and on budget. We've got to make sure we deliver this master plan that is going to hit on some of these things about creative learning and labor shortages in certain areas, but we've got to deliver that and keep the prices and the timeline in check as we do it over the next about five years, three to five years. Thank you.
And rounding out this question, we'll come back to this end of the table, and Carlton Abner, what do you see as the biggest priority or challenge for JCCC?
Yeah, thank you. I think the biggest priority is demonstrating value, as it is with any entity providing a service or that you're paying for, right? And I'll break this down into three constituents here. For your students, what that means is you're making sure that you have meaningful experiences, that you're preparing your students with market-ready assets, like people can go and they can either apply this to the next step in their career, or apply this to the next step of their educational journey. For employers, you want to make sure that you're demonstrating value by meeting needs, like the demands of what's going on. If there are a pool of vacancies, and hopefully this Johnson County Community College can help with filling that pool of vacancies. And then for the community at large, it's all of the above, but doing that in the most efficient way possible, and I would echo what trustee Ratan said, that this is going to be, whoever's elected on this board is going to be a part of the next, building of the next strategic plan, and so all of those things, those elements that I mentioned are going to be crucial in that those get addressed. I'm going to go back, one more thing I need to mention for the students, this is a really, really, the traditional college student, really, really unique generation, and being able to respond to how unique those needs are is also going to be a huge priority, because there will be some adaptations that folks need to make, as was mentioned previously, with some of the services and wraparound support that you provide.
Thank you for responding to that question. The order now will fall to Jerry to begin this next question. We got a question from the audience about tuition. I was also prepared to ask about that, so that's where we'll start. Just for some context, Johnson County resident students this year are set to pay roughly $100 per credit hour in tuition and fees, give or take a couple of dollars, but that's lower than the average rate at colleges across the KC metro. It's one of the lowest tuition rates among community colleges in Kansas. Some readers say this shows tuition should be increased in order to shift the burden of who pays for JCCC more from taxpayers to students. Several of you mentioned, though, that the low tuition rates, the affordability, is part of what attracts students to JCCC. So this question from the audience asks, what have you done to keep tuition low for Johnson County students? What would you do if elected to keep tuition where it's at, or would you see yourself ever voting to raise tuition? Jerry Charlton, 60 seconds for all of you on this one.
Thank you, Kyle. This is a catch.
Turn that microphone just to your, there you go, thank you.
This is certainly a catch-22, because, you know, all you in the audience here are paying taxes. 10% of your property tax goes to the school. Approximately 15% of the funding for the school comes from the tuition. I applaud Mark Hamill's efforts in trying to keep tuition down, but it's a broad examination of what we need to take a look at. Another thing that Mark mentioned is, you know, programs that, you know, are they programs that we need? Do we need to look at cutting some of the programs, particularly over the next four years with the implementation of the new strategic plan with a broader coursework? So we need to take a look at that going forward. So it's a dynamic approach to what we need to do, and it's going to be, it's going to be a constructive effort amongst everybody, all the trustees.
And I'll ask follow-up questions for all of you. So in the balance between mill levy and tuition, because of course you mentioned tuition makes up about 15%, that most of the college's budget does come from property taxes, so balancing those two, competing those two interests, how would you vote if you were elected? What would be more paramount in your mind? The mill levy or tuition?
It would be the mill levy, because we're paying, we're increasing taxes. The county commission voted about four weeks ago to increase your taxes for next year. There's going to be a ballot issue in next year as well to continue a sales tax that was supposed to drop off the books, but I'm sorry.
That was, I think someone's phone alerted her to the time. Somebody's watch.
So.
Finish your thought, Jerry.
It's examining the mill levy is what we need to be taking a look at.
Okay, Lee Cross, the same question to you about tuition, first of all. So the questioner asks, what would you do to, in this questioner's phrasing, keep tuition low? Seems like they like the low tuition rates, but what would you do to look at the current tuition and whether you would need to ever raise it over the next four years?
Well, tuition and fees went up about 60, 70% from 2009 to 2017, and in part, that was because governors and legislators of both parties had put pressure on us to spin down the mill, and frankly, many of my colleagues were scared to raise the mill as much as was necessary to keep tuition and fees low. So I was an advocate in 2017 that we freeze tuition and fees, and largely, over the last, over my last two terms, we've kept tuition and fees low, and we can do that thanks to the people of Johnson County and the taxpayers here, and even the county. I mean, the county commission is essentially not our boss, but a strong overseer. They help control our money. They help provide mental health, which a number of our students need, so we certainly thank them for all that they do. We did just raise tuition and fees in part because of inflation, and we needed to keep pace and be prudent as fiduciaries and stewards of the college, so we just raised tuition and fees, but I'd like to keep it flat.
And so it sounds like, again, the same follow-up I asked Jerry, but it sounds like in the balance between thinking of the mill levy and property taxes versus tuition, it sounds like you err more on the side of keeping tuition where it's at as much as possible, where it's been at over the last 10 or 15 years.
I'd say that's accurate, and I'd also like to add, we'd like the state to maintain the third leg of the stool that was promised to us in the '60s when the community college movement got going in Kansas. So it was supposed to be a third, a third, a third, as I know my two fellow trustees know, and probably many of us up here know, but since then, I mean, tuition and fees covers 20, 25%. The county pays, the taxpayers pay 60, 65%, and then the state's only around 14, 15%. The federal government does a lot, and we thank our congressional delegation through grants and federal student loans. We get a lot of money from them, but we'd like everybody to carry their fair share.
Question to Mark Hamill about tuition. What would you do, as the questioner asks, over the next four years to keep tuition low in this questioner's framing? What steps would you take? How would you balance, again, this idea of property taxes versus tuition?
Yeah, thank you. So during my time I've been there, again, I've voted, I've always voted not to raise tuition. I've always voted not to raise taxes on my first initial vote. I'm trying to go revenue neutral. I would pick neither. I really think that we don't have to raise tuition or raise property taxes. We just need to do a better job and be more efficient with our funding. And the people that are working there, working through the budget, are doing what they're asked to be told, or doing what they're asked to do. But we could do better. There are places where we renovate spaces way earlier than I would. There's, I know I wouldn't spend my money the way we spend Johnson County money. I think a lot of you would feel the same way. If you saw how we spend the money, it's not all bad. We're doing a lot of great things. I don't want to take away from that. But we can be more efficient. And everybody's gone through their life where they're like, hey, we got to buckle down. We got to be more efficient during this month, four years, I go to, go back to school, whatever it may be. We can always buckle down and find, figure out how to come up with more money without having to raise tuition, raise taxes. The other thing I'll say in particular is I do not want to ever raise tax, or raise tuition for Johnson County students. When they're already paying 70% of the bill between their parents or grandparents themselves, they do not need to pay higher tuition. If anything, I would do it for another, somebody outside the county or outside the state.
So the follow-up question to you then, kind of sounds like you would look more closely at the budget, where you might.
Correct.
Efficiency savings, as you put it. So that means cut. So where would you maybe look to cut the budget? What services, what programs?
Absolutely. It's not about cutting services at all. If anything, I'd even try to figure out how to pay some of the teachers, especially adjuncts, more. I think that's not quite where we should be with some of them. But we do more renovations than we need, more buildings being put up faster rates than we need to be doing it. And we could just slow down a little bit on some of the things we're doing. And there's all these great wants we're trying to do. But we don't have to do them as fast as we're doing them right now. We can slow this, slow walk some of these renovations. We can slow walk building, some of these buildings. And we can also partner with the people in the community to get more donations, help these things. So we have a lot of people that love Johnson County, across the entire county.
Jeff Holden, the question to you about tuition. What would you do over the next four years to keep it low, as this questioner frames it? What steps would you take to make sure that JCCC remains affordable?
So I am in agreement that JCCC should be very affordable for the Johnson County residents. I also know that the mission, as I mentioned before, of Johnson County Community College is to inspire learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. And I do know that things do cost money. Now, there are things that do impact where that money comes from. So while we can try to plan out four years, five years, you can have situations that we're in right now where there are questionable economic times. We don't know what the values are, what the tax, what the tax rates are, what the tax dollars are going to amount to. So these situations, to me, have to also be looked at on a case-by-case basis as well. So I think that when you look at, and when you look at tuition, as the moderator mentioned, we are one of the lower ones here in Kansas. So we're doing really, really well, as far as I'm concerned. And those are things you have to evaluate.
So then comparing, you know, the mill levy with the tuition rates, what wins out for you? What's more important to you as you're kind of considering that balance?
Well, I mean, again, I think it's, it's going to come down to a case-by-case thing. Like, there may be situations where the budgets aren't there because economic times don't allow the budgets to be there, right? So what are, what are we going to do in those situations, right? So if our, if our tax dollars don't stretch as far because our values go down, then we don't, where are we getting that money from? So those are the situations that we have to take into consideration. Raising, now I'll go back, because just raising the rate of a credit hour isn't going to make up that gap necessarily. But I'm going to say that it is a balance of looking at those things closely and dealing with them appropriately based on what's going on.
At the end of the table, Don Ratan, the question of tuition. What would you do over the next four years to keep it low, or at least bear in mind where it's been at and trying to keep it affordable for students?
The first thing I'd like to say, that from a recent economic study, JCCC injects $1.7 billion into the local economy annually. And for every dollar that a student invests in JCCC, they get back $6.40, $6.40. And that's on our most recent economic impact report. And so one of the main reasons that students attend JCCC, JCCC, is to have an affordable and debt-free education. So the decision to increase or decrease tuition is a very serious one, where the whole board and staff gets involved. And we make sure that we understand the reasons behind it. We make sure we understand how much of the change. And at this time, I would not support a tuition increase. But again, we, we look at it annually. And so there's ongoing work to figure out how to make that balance. And there is a student loan debt crisis nationally. And again, our students had the opportunity to come here and not incur debt.
And the follow-up to you, again, we have, we have readers asking about keeping tuition low. We also have readers asking about lowering their property taxes. Those are obviously the two major sources of revenue. What's the balance for you?
I'd love to give more perspective on property tax as well. Everyone can go and look at the value of their home and see how much property tax you're paying specifically for JCCC versus your county versus your K-12 school. We have reduced the mill levy for every year that I've been a trustee. And right now, we sit at 2/10 above revenue-neutral rate. So we are reducing the mill levy. We are holding tuition low. What's happening is assessments are continuing to go up. So from my numbers, the average home is $570,000. And that translates to $10.25 per week to support JCCC.
Coming back to, oh, sorry. Finish your thought. I didn't mean to interrupt.
And so I just want to show that we generate more income. We generate more in tax revenue than we receive. We continue to lower the mill levy rate. And we also take any increases seriously.
Coming back to this end of the table, Carlton Abner, the question of tuition. What would you do over the next four years to, again, keep it low as this reader frames it and consider what students are paying?
Yeah, I agree with the other answers here. That certainly is a very important topic that we make this as much of a value for the students as possible. And I'm sure there'll be a follow-up question, but also for the residents of the county. You know, the way that I look at this, having not gone there before, all I can tell you is what I've done in the past. And I allow mission vision and values to drive what it is we're going to prioritize when we budget things. And then that would lay out your strategic plan. As trustee Hamill had pointed out, you kind of have to assess, you know, what's working, what's not, what's, what programs are doing well, what aren't. And look to where, you know, what continues, what doesn't. There's going to be some very dynamic, hard decisions because of the revenue pressures that every entity is facing right now. But that's in general, you know, how I would take a look at it. But I do also agree, this is a very important issue here, that we make sure that this stays a value for the students.
And the balance in your mind between property taxes, tuition, what wins out, what wins priority in your mind?
Yeah. I would say first, I applaud the current board's efforts in making sure that that, those two things do stay in check, the tuition and as far as the burden to the taxpayer. Which one would I prioritize? You know, I would probably lean, as Mr. Charlton said, you know, towards making sure that we have a good value for the taxpayers and finding other ways to innovate. I don't think this is an or issue. I think there's an and here. Partnering with businesses, having them do some of the support for the programming that we do. There's ways to innovate. So it's not just those two sources that we find. As trustee Cross mentioned, asking the state for additional funding, or at least to meet the promises they've made in the past. But yeah, I think there's opportunity to innovate. But if you, the question between the tuition and the mill levy or the taxpayers, I want to make sure that, you know, our taxpayers have a very consistent and dependable way of figuring out what their life is going to look like to the extent possible.
And rounding out this question, Chad Carroll, about tuition. What would you do over the next four years to make sure tuition remains low or affordable for students? What steps would you take?
Thank you so much, Kyle. I do not believe that tuition would need to be raised. I'm going to loop in the mill levy and everything as well. So as I see it, it's, the mill levy has dropped since 2022. And as trustee Ratan said, that assessments obviously are going up. So I think there is a balance there, that we have to ensure that we're, you know, being good stewards of the property tax money that's coming in to the college. I think another point that has not been brought up is that we need to not only, you know, we don't need to beg the state, we need to advocate, you know, with the state and say, listen, this is the value that it's bringing. As I'm looking at the numbers from the annual report, the amount of state aid we're receiving is the same amount essentially as tuition and fees. And, you know, trustee Ratan, we're similar. We like facts. And I'm looking at the American Association of Community Colleges. And essentially, the summary of it is, is that for every dollar, public dollar that goes in, you're receiving a value of a little over $6.
But it sounds like, if I'm asking that same question about property taxes versus tuition, those two sources of revenue, it sounds like you're leaning more towards prioritizing tuition. Just maybe explain your thinking there. Where would you, where does the balance lie for you?
Yeah, I would maintain that we would not raise the tuition. But I think there's a balance there that we may, most likely may not need to raise the mill levy either.
Let's go to the next issue. Lee Cross will start us off here. This comes from the audience. This audience member writes, there has been increased interest on the part of local school districts and high school students to take concurrent courses at JCCC. I believe a couple of you may have mentioned that in your opening statements or in your initial questions. This person says, that demand has increased so much that demand is exceeding supply of seats. Do you see this as a priority for the college? Do you support expanding seats in our programs? And this question kind of dovetails with also thinking more broadly about enrollment, again, trying to find different groups of students that might want to come to JCCC. So again, this particular question from the audience, do you see this high school program kind of pipeline as a priority for the college? 60 seconds. Start with Lee Cross.
It's critical, Kyle. Thank you for the question, to the audience for the question. It's helped us maintain some stability in enrollment over the last two or three years. Dr. Bound, our previous president, prioritized this. The College Now and Quickstep programs are critical. A little bit of attention figuring out who's going to pay for it, pay for the high school instruction or if they come to our campus. But it's critical. We had a retreat last night talking about the expanded need in many programs. And in fact, we're building new buildings. And I love Mark Hamill like a brother, but he knows I'll speak my mind to him. And I challenge him to find where the efficiencies are and which buildings he'd like to get rid of. Because we're about to expand, based in part upon the demand that we have and where we think practical nursing, or dental hygiene, or fire management's going to go. So I'm all for expanding. I certainly think it'd be a jobs project for the county and good for the way I see the world.
Mark, you're next. You can respond directly to maybe what the point Lee made, but also the question about, do you see the high school pipeline program as a, as a priority for JCCC?
Yeah, I believe it's critical. It's pretty obvious, the demand that we have across the, across the county, and we aren't meeting it. There are more students that want to do it. I was actually talking to a family recently that their student, their son was looking forward to going to a specific high school. And last minute, they changed their mind because they could get more credit now classes at a different, at a different school. So those are things that we do need to be looking at, thinking about, how do we make sure we get everybody, everything we need? I will say, I'd like to get deeper into it. And I do have some concern with, I would love to see more actual college professors teaching those classes, instead of asking high school teachers to kind of raise their bar. I want to make sure they get some more of our actual college professors teaching more of those classes. Do you have a question? Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. I totally agree.
Okay.
But I would like to see more.
You can say those.
If your experience is always here, I would like to, and again, it's not about getting rid of them, but it's about bringing more of the college professors actually into those classrooms, or bringing them to actually get the college experience. I don't want to, I don't want them to take away and lose some of the college experience they could get out of those two years while they're in high school grabbing those classes. The other thing is, yes, I pointed out every year, different things we can do. We have quite a few smart classrooms that are very expensive, and I point those out regularly. We are overspending in lots of areas where we could slow walk some of these programs. It's not about stopping the growth. It's about how do we make sure we're more efficient with it?
Yeah. Move the microphone down to Jeff Holden. We'll give you the chance to discuss the high school program, the high school pipeline. Do you see that as a priority for JCCC? How would you emphasize and/or promote it if elected?
I definitely see it as a priority for Johnson County Community College. If you want to talk about marketing and you want people to know about your institution, that is the people that you are targeting. So that's a very easy way to get your story across. And it gives us an opportunity to be able to tell those, tell the story appropriately to the people that are actually visiting our, our school or are taking part in our programs. So for me, as a, as a marketing person, that's, that's like low-hanging fruit, as far as I'm concerned, as far as like what we should be doing. And I think it's awesome because I look at all these young people that are going to school now, and if they're going, when they go to four-year institutions, they're getting out of those four-year institutions quicker. They're paying, they're paying three times more, but they're getting out of there quicker because of these opportunities that they have. So you talk about helping parents and helping families and helping our community. That right there is something to me that's like very, very, very valuable. And I would lean way in on that one.
Don Ratan, your thoughts on the high school pipeline, trying to promote that? How would you prioritize that if elected?
Yes, it is a priority. And I do want to say that recently, I attended the anniversary of the College Now program. If you didn't know, Johnson County Community College was the first community college to really implement that in our area. And when they celebrated the anniversary, they invited all of the counselors of the local high schools. And the counselors were so thankful for the college partnering with them to make this happen. And so I believe that the college and the counselors will, the people closest to that work will find a way to figure out how to expand it. Whenever I'm out in the community, I hear the praises of the College Now program. And I think that will continue. I think there is a question to go ask if we've built that capacity into our upcoming master plan. And I do want to add that of the last three of the four years I've been a trustee, our student, our student senate leader has been a current high school student. Thank you.
Coming back to this end of the table, Carlton Abner, the College Now program. How would you prioritize it? Would you prioritize it? Do you see it as a means of, of expanding interest and enrollment in JCCC?
Yep, clearly, clearly a priority. It is the fastest-growing segment of the student population. And so this is exactly what I meant about, you know, looking at mission vision values and allowing that to drive your strategic priorities. You've got the fastest-growing segment of your student population. Clearly, that identifies itself as a priority. And so your strategic plan and how you prioritize what you do next has to involve, how do you meet the needs of that fasting, fastest-growing section? So yes, you absolutely prioritize this. You make it a part of your strategic priority. And you do everything you can to, to not only meet that need, but then to also position the value that doing so is making to the community. I was a part of the same conversation that trustee Hamill had mentioned, where it literally led to someone choosing a different school because they could get more credit out, college credit, from Johnson County Community College. So it's, it's definitely something that we not only need to prioritize, but we also need to position as how it's providing value for the community.
Chad Carroll, your thoughts on College Now? Probably hard to find anyone that's able who would say, no, we shouldn't do it. But can you just kind of explain your stance on it, how you would, would go about overseeing it and promoting it and prioritizing it if you were elected?
Yes, I think it's vital to our student success. If we want to be the Johnson County Community College, then we need to ensure that we're taking care of the students within Johnson County. I think there needs to be a high priority and focus on expanding that program. Just on a personal note, we were going to a back-to-school night for our son who's in high school. And one of the teachers talked about, you know, AP classes versus College Now classes. And so I think it's, it's a great opportunity for our students to take a different path, to be tied in more to the community, as well as if they don't graduate with their certification or degree, they can go on and continue their education at Johnson County Community College.
And then wrapping up this question, Jerry Charlton, again, your thoughts on College Now, how you would approach it if elected?
Yeah, I touched on, I touched on the strategic plan that was implemented, first phase of it was implemented last year. It was introducing a broader scope of academic coursework. The second phase is implementing this year is a guided pathway. So I am for these programs, provided that the kids, you know, understand what their career path's going to be. And that provides an organized implementation of those college credits. But a bigger thing that we need to talk about is our education nationally. I spoke with a foreign exchange student a couple of weeks ago. And he's a high school student. He's a junior. And he told me that our students are two years behind in their coursework compared to, you know, his nation back home. And that's something, that's something that we need to examine on a national level.
Next question, we'll start with Mark Hamill. He'll be, he'll go first on this one. 60 seconds for all of you. We had a couple of questions, one via email, one from the crowd regarding part-time or adjunct staff. We had someone email us today pointing out every year, the college posts JCCC fast facts that include how many full-time faculty versus part-time. And part-time faculty typically far outnumber full-time faculty, so they have a significant amount of contact with students in classes. Someone in the crowd tonight writes, "Part-time staff and adjuncts are invisible," in this questioner's words. Rarely do incumbents mention these part-time or adjunct teachers. You can respond directly to that if you want to. But the question being, how do JCCC trustees interact with and hear from part-time and adjunct faculty? Part-time faculty has no official voice or seat at the table. I think mentioning here that they're not part of the Faculty Association. So really, the broader question here is, what's JC, what's the board's role in terms of interacting with and making sure that the part-time and adjunct faculty are taken care of? 60 seconds.
Yeah, I definitely agree. I believe the adjuncts have not been represented well enough. I think it's a whole nationwide trend. And I know that I've asked those questions at different times, at different places. And I kind of get, this is how we do it. This is how colleges work. And I don't like that answer. I really think we can do better with this. There is ways, we've talked about trying to figure out how to get them better pay. I think it's really important. And I've said, you know, I've suggested we should be talking to the chairs, the deans, to make sure that they know which adjuncts want to promote, which ones are very happy where they're at. We got adjuncts who are doing this for multiple different reasons. We need to make sure we know each one of these, these adjuncts very well. So we can say, hey, which one is needs development, which one does not. I'm worried sometimes they're overlooked and passed over for promotions at times because another great qualified candidate comes up. They pick them sometimes, maybe, possibly, because they know they already have an adjunct here. And those are harder to find than a full-time. I would like to see the full-timers actually teach more classes and how to make that work. That's a little more difficult. But I do think we need to figure out how to get some of the administration ways shared differently, so they can be more in the classroom than they are currently. But we got to figure out a way to get pay. I actually talked to the president about that here just this week.
Jeff Holden, your thought on approaching part-time adjunct faculty? How should the board handle it? How would you handle it if elected? What would you do to ensure that they're taken care of?
Yeah, so I do, I value adjunct. I mean, I think a lot of these people are coming from the professional world. And they do have a lot to add for, for the students that are out there, especially the real-world experiences that we've been through, and can bring them some, some. experiences that we've been through and can bring them some, some fun stories that they can, they can engage in and take part in. As far as, as how they're represented, you know, I don't know for sure how they are represented. It sounds like they're not represented, but in, in our last forum, I'm a big advocate of people having a voice, right? So if they don't have representation, I'm, I believe that everybody should have a seat at the table to have a voice in the future that they, that they're trying to build for themselves. And if they are part of the, this institution, then there should be, they should have representation at the, at the table so, and they can interact with, with all of us to figure out the best paths forward.
Don Ratan, how do you as JCCC trustee interact with and hear from part-time faculty? What's
So I agree with everyone else that the part-time or adjunct faculty is definitely valuable. And the reason why they're valuable is a lot of times, these are people who are currently working in industry, so they have their finger on the pulse of what's happening right now. So they add a lot of value in our organization. Also, the reason why we have a lot of, well, the reason why we may have adjunct faculty or part-time faculty is because that actually allows us as a community college to be flexible and agile for workforce needs. And so that's two of the reasons why we have adjunct or part-time. My personal interaction with adjunct and part-time employees and faculty has been on the college council. The college council has a representative from every facet of the college, including part-time, adjunct, students, faculty, and staff. And so that is a great way for us all to come together and talk about our needs. It can definitely improve. And again, I like to go to the people who are closest to the issue to ask them how it would improve.
Coming back to this end of the table, Carlton Abner, part-time faculty? If you were elected to the board, how would you interact and oversee part-time adjunct faculty?
Yeah, I think the first thing you have to do is like, what, what problem are we solving, right? Like hearing their voice is just not specific enough, right? So I mean, the first thing you need to do is just go and get that data. If there's a problem, let's query it. Let's survey it. Let's figure out what's going on, what the issues are, and then we can address the specific issues. Hearing, hearing, hearing their voice, sounds good in paper, but it doesn't, what problem, what problem are we solving? So let's go figure out what the problem is and identify that. As everyone else has said, you know, working in higher ed, I can tell you, this is, this is, the leveraging of adjunct faculty is something you do. It helps control costs, but it also provides you access, valuable access, to professionals that are out there in the field, and that is something that you have to have as a part of your experience. But if there's a problem, I was, I'm glad trustee Ratan mentioned that they do have some representation in council, because I was going to say, I'd be very surprised if they don't have some representation somewhere. So making sure that, that we figure out, is that adequate representation? Are there additional problems? Do we suspect there are? And if there are, then let's go get that information.
Chad Carroll, the question about part-time adjunct faculty? What should be the board's role? How would you want to hear from them and, and hear their particular concerns and needs?
Yeah, to trustee Ratan's point, the college council, I believe they have the adjunct council. We need to ensure that we're coordinating with them. I know the Faculty Association comes on a regular basis, but we need to ensure that we are working with all of the important people within, within the community college. You know, we're not the ones actually, you know, ensuring that the students are successful in the classroom. I'm not teaching anyone. So we need to ensure that they feel valued and that we are taking care of their needs.
Moving the mic to Jerry Charlton, the question about working with part-time adjunct faculty? What's the board's role? How would you approach it?
I believe, I'm fully aware that the adjunct professors make up significantly more than, than the tenured professors do. And there's a difference between, it was mentioned before about what they bring to the table is applied. So there's a difference between book smart and applied smart. And these adjunct professors, you know, they present the applied art, the applied smarts. And, you know, those people need to be recognized if they're not.
And wrapping up this question, Lee Cross, working with part-time adjunct faculty? How have you done that within your time on the board, and how would you continue to do it if you are reelected?
I've done it largely being a strong JCCC, CFA faculty ally. And I'll tell you, my father was a union bricklayer, and I was fortunate enough to work the 2004 cycle for the National AFL-CIO. And I was there when the University of Cincinnati adjunct organized. So I will tell you, one of my greatest failures as trustee was I had attempted to organize adjunct. We have an adjunct musician that performs at our church, and it's difficult to get people to understand how they need union representation. So I would encourage them to organize. I will say, for the JCCCFA, they do negotiate a new master agreement every three years. When they do so, that does tend to lift all boats for professional staff in the administration and for the adjunct. We do have intention, we have to keep costs low and support and trust our administrators. The AAUP does state that currently, on average, it's about 70% nationally where it's adjunct to full-time. We're a bit better at 63%, but we can do better.
Mindful of time, we're coming up upon an hour. I know there are seven of you, so probably want to maybe go maybe 20, 30 more minutes max, but time for three, four, maybe five more questions. The order now falls to Jeff Holton. We did have a question from the audience about wanting to promote trade careers among JCCC graduates or JCCC students. That kind of ties in with the perennial question about workforce development. What do you see as JCCC's role both in Johnson County and statewide in developing the future workforce? Can you point to specific programs at the college that are achieving this aim and also areas where the college may be coming up short? So things that may be doing well as well as gaps that you want to see filled? Start with Jeff Holton for 60 seconds.
So I think this is another area that is extremely important. One of the programs that I mentioned in my opening was the Career Ready Program, which I think is another amazing program that Johnson County Community College offers to its students. As far as workforce development, I think Johnson County does a good job of this. I think it can always be better, and we should always be thinking about how it can be better. In my conversations with some of the construction industries around town, that's, it's been a, it's been hard for them to figure it out, right? Because everybody is a little bit different. So how do you create programs that support what they're trying to do when they're trying to build their workforce up? As far, and then as far as the trades, I think these are extremely important as well. I think that they are not marked, I haven't seen, maybe I'm not the target, but I don't know that they're marketed as well as they could be. I think a lot of people think they're, they're supposed to go on to a four-year institution, and they fall back to the trades. And I think if we meet people where they are and we find those people that want to do trades, and we show them those paths, it can be pretty awesome.
Don Ratan, can you point to specific programs at JCCC that are achieving the aim of promoting workforce development, trade careers, and also maybe identify gaps where the college is not doing as well?
Yeah, I think we're doing a great job, and I think that we could always use continuous improvement. Some of the things that we're doing is, we do partner with industry, and we host them, we go out to them, and we find out, just get a finger on the pulse of what's going on. Some of the things that we see in the future for workforce development are micro credentials, hybrid learning models. We currently do internships and apprenticeships and getting more cross-disciplinary and different methods. Just-in-time training is a big thing in manufacturing. I believe with some of the workforce development training that we're doing with Panasonic, we'll start to incorporate that and expand that. Additionally, I do want to say that for the college, we have added short-term Pell Grants, which actually go to people who are doing more of the trades, and they have a shorter matriculation time. And I think that's actually been a really good help for our workforce development.
Don, this end of the table, Carlton Abner, point to specific programs you see at JCCC that are achieving the aim of promoting workforce development and maybe spot some areas for growth in the college.
Yeah, I think it'd be hard pressed to find a program that's not doing that. And I'd certainly be all for, for more quantifiable ways of evaluating the programs that we have. But listen, here, this is one of the things that I'm most excited about, is the role that this entity could play in workforce development. I've mentioned this at the forum at the college, but there's this fantastic book by Bruce Katz called The New Localism. And essentially, it talks about how you take what's going well in your area of the country and outside of federal entities, federal dollars, you begin to develop those relationships with businesses and workforce development. And here, and the civic council is latching on to that. I graduated recently from a program called the Kansas City Tomorrow that was put on by the civic council, who identified some strengths. We have defense, advanced energy, technologies, data storage, automotive supply chain, and transportation. So those are the things that we could then use to leverage and build better workforce development, because it's going to be right in line with what the rest of the area is doing.
Chad Carroll, what do you see as specific programs at JCCC that are successful in terms of workforce development, trade careers possibly, and then where do you see gaps?
Yeah, I believe there's a slew of programs that are amazing. HVAC, CDL with the new site that was just open, police EMT, fire, plumbing, automotive. I think to Jeff Holton's point, that we have to ensure that we are marketing this along with College Now to our high schoolers and marketing out in the community, so people understand that if, you know, they're coming out of high school, or if they want to make a shift to a different career, that we offer those things as well.
Jerry Charlton, workforce development? What do you see specific programs at JCCC doing well, and where do you see maybe areas for growth?
This is my background. As an engineer and general contractor, I hired these kids when they're out of school. And some of the programs, you know, the kids just need experience. They just need to get out, out in practical experience, you know, in the field. Other programs, you know, they need to have some classroom, classroom work, like electrical. It's a dangerous field. You need to know a little bit about what you're working on before you, before you go out into the field and work in the field. These, these jobs are well-paying. I've been designing welded connections, inspecting welded connections for 35 years. And I had to retain a welder on a project in New England several years ago, and it was $120 an hour prevailing wage. So this is, this is part of what we need to market to the kids, you know, that these trades are, are productive, are good career path opportunities. And part of, I think what we need in that trade school, the trade schools is to teach an entrepreneurial spirit about that, because, you know, I'm, I know a lot of, a lot of people that, you know, didn't, didn't go to college, but they are doing very well in the trades.
Lee Cross, the question of promoting workforce development? What specific programs at JCCC right now are successful, and where do you see areas for growth or gaps?
Well, it's really an embarrassment of riches. I do thank you for the question, Kyle. When I was chair of the board in '22 and '23, I had requested that we meet in the WCMT building that houses metal fabrication, welding, and technology. And we expanded those spaces because of demand over the last 10 or 15 years. But it's more than just that. We have a strong relationship with BNSF, who's expanded their role in the regional training facility here, but really it's expanded into a national facility for them. And in fact, BNSF CEO Carl Ice was put on to K-Bore by the governor, and he was a strong ally of ours who helped us do things like bring Panasonic here. The governor and the legislature helped negotiate to bring that here, but they chose us in a similar partnership that they have with Truckee Valley Community College in California. But they were counting on us to help innovate what they needed on the tech side and the credit side. So they're going to need an amazing blend of like liberal arts students for accounting, but they need tech students to train to be workers in their factory. And then in terms of gaps, real quickly, if I may, looking to see, because unions are weakening very policy decisions. We need to look and see what the trade unions are no longer doing and pick up the difference there.
And then rounding out this question, Mark Hamel, workforce development? Where do you see JCCC specific programs that are successful, and where do you see areas for growth or gaps?
Yeah, thank you. I grew up, thank you. I was a union journeyman carpenter, started as an apprentice, worked my way through up to becoming a journeyman. And while that, during that time, I actually got to help build two of the buildings on campus. I'm pretty proud of another aspect of being a part of that campus. I actually had a family friend, I just took through a tour to help him try to get into electrician program up there. And you're looking at like at least a year wait to get into that program. These are great programs, and we are leading the way in many ways. Some of the technical schools are having a tougher time struggling, and somehow we're picking up the slack on this one. I'm really proud of the work we're doing in these things, but we've got to continue to expand in those areas. And that's one of the things we are looking at right now, that we're looking, trying to figure out, expand each, quite a few of those programs, or plumbing, quite a few of these have massive weights. And one of the most important things we do is work with the community and get feedback from the, from the employers. And the ones that want to get involved and help us develop those programs are a huge asset to us to really get this right.
The next question will fall to Don Ratan to start. 60 seconds for all of you. We had a number of questions from the audience about campus safety, gun violence. It's unfortunately a kind of perennial concern at schools, both K through 12 and higher education. We did have one person write, "Given gun violence and school shootings in the news, what steps have you taken or will you take to keep JCCC and its students, faculty, staff safe from gun violence?" Also, another person asking, "How often are campus safety protocols reviewed and updated to reflect best practices and new legislation?" So take those combination of questions for what you will and approach this issue. What are your thoughts on keeping the campus safe from gun violence? We'll start with Don Ratan.
I want to say that I am a gun owner, but I'm also a member of Moms Demand Action and have been endorsed by that group for my stance on gun safety. I just had a meeting with the new president of the college, and I was delighted to find out that he's already mobilized some resources to go and look again at what are our safety regulations, where are some weaknesses around the college. So I love that Dr. Mixa is on it and is responding to recent events. As far as trustees, we go through an annual tabletop exercise on safety and protecting ourselves, walking in and knowing where the exits are, knowing things that could be potential weapons. There are emergency buttons in every classroom, and everyone gets training up to the trustees on an annual basis on how to stay safe. Now, again, with all the changes, we can always improve and do better and step up what we're doing.
Carlton Abner, the question, again, several questions from the audience, wanted to know your stance on, on how to keep the campus safe, particularly from gun violence? If you see that as an issue, what would be your approach? What should be the board's approach to that?
Yeah, this is, in the military, what we would call a no-fail mission. You just, these are things you cannot get wrong. So again, as you look at mission, vision, values, and what you prioritize and what you invest, invest in, campus security is certainly one of them. I know that from experience. At our university, we spend millions, millions of dollars employing our own police force. And it's, it's just something, again, that you just, you can't go wrong. What I would do personally is, is review the clerkery reports, which are reports that every university, college entity campus has to submit, that says, this is what's going on in the campus, these are the crimes that are reported, these are crimes that have happened. Take a look at that, trending the data, making sure that we have appropriate responses to things like, like threats, like what's going on in our classrooms. Can folks get to safe areas if there ever is any issues related to that? And then are we appropriately funded for something that you just, you cannot get wrong? But it would start with just reviewing the data on the current state and then going from there.
Chad Carroll, what would you do if elected to the JCCC board to ensure students, faculty, staff are safe from gun violence?
Yeah, I think this is obviously a pertinent and major issue. I'm, you know, I'm a gun sense candidate as well with Moms Demand Action. And I believe, one, we have to look at this as a board, you know, annually to ensure that we do have things in place. We need to make sure that we're coordinating with the JCCC campus, police, campus safety, to ensure we have different things in place. I do not know, but do we have, you know, is this touched on in the orientation process with students so that they understand that we care about them and different things that we have in place for them? I think that's very, very important. And, you know, we need to ensure that we're running through exercises. I do this at my job. We have to run through exercises to see, okay, if there was an emergency on campus, how quickly are we able to notify the students, notify the staff, and how will they respond?
Jerry Charlton, what would you do if elected to the board to make sure that students, faculty, staff are, are safe from gun violence? What steps would you take? How would you prioritize the issue?
Fortunately, we live in Johnson County, and Johnson County is special. I don't know that we've had any issues on campus with, with gun issues, but one thing I'd like to ask the current trustees, do, do we have officers on campus?
We have our own police force and I did forget to give them a shout out. They are very capable and they are ever-present and they are very responsive.
Very good.
And we have a police academy onsite as well.
Okay. So that's where I would start and you're not going to prevent, you know, all gun violence. You just have to be ready to respond. And it sounds like we have staff onsite to do that response. And that would be my number one goal.
Lee Cross, the question to you about dealing with and preventing gun violence. Again, a perennial issue unfortunately for K-12 and higher education. So what would be your approach on the board? How would you keep student, staff, and faculty safe?
Well, the main thing I've done, we've done, is to support the JCCC Police Department. And former Chief Russell, who just died here recently, he told me that while he was in the military, they learned the concept of your weapon, your burden. And it was 12, 13 years ago when the legislature in their wisdom decided to allow guns on campus. I opposed that. We had a thorough review and we took the exemption for as long as we could to not have guns on campus, which I think was almost a full four years. But finally, it was just too costly to have all of the systems in place to keep guns off campus. So I am a gun owner. I don't believe there should be guns on campus. I even opposed having gun lockers on campus so as to not encourage people carrying on campus and just make sure people understand it's your weapon, your burden. And we're the only country on the planet that has this problem, I think for obvious reasons, but I don't really want to get into that here. So support the JCCC Police Department and hopefully teach as many people as possible. It's your weapon, it's your burden.
Mark Hamel, the idea of making sure that the campus is safe, particularly from gun violence, how would you, or what steps would you take to make sure that students, faculty, staff feel safe and are safe?
Thank you. Unfortunately, or I'll say I wish we could take this for granted and everybody should be able to do that, but we cannot. This is the biggest number one priority we have on campus at all time. There can be no learning, there can be no betterment of life without the protection of the life that we have on campus. And I was going to talk about Chief Russell, we lost him this summer. I've had a lot of really great conversations with the man and unfortunately, he's no longer here with us. But he has served our college really well. And I've talked to a lot of his officers and talked about the training they've gone through and how serious they take this role. And we have a lot of really great talented people that are ex-officers from other places and have experienced tougher stuff than they feel like they deal with on campus regularly. They are fully trained and ready and prepared for anything that happens on that campus. We also have great relationships with all the other officers across the county, over the park that we're in, Olathe, and they work drills together as well. So they're fully ready to do everything we possibly can to protect the precious life we have on campus.
And rounding out this question, Jeff Holton, what would you do as JCCC trustee to ensure students, faculty, and staff are safe, feel safe, particularly from gun violence?
Right. So I think this should be a value of all of us, that people that come onto the campus are safe. In full transparency, about 95% of the things we talk about here, I am not an expert in. And the way I would manage this is there are experts that are on campus. I met two of them at our last forum and it was a joy to get to know those gentlemen. And if we provide them a seat at the table when it comes to this, that's how we're going to learn most appropriately. And what we want to learn from them is what are the resources that they need? What are the needs that they have? They know that campus probably better than even the students know that campus. And then if we need to invest in studies or research or data that helps us make those appropriate decisions, that's what I would be looking for and that's how I would make my decisions, is with the experts and with the data.
Another question from the audience, we'll start with Carlton Abner here. Again, a couple of you have mentioned relationships with the state, either wanting to see more funding from the state or more interaction from the state. This questioner points out that there will be a new governor taking office in January 2027, not this, not next year, but the year after that during your term though. So how do you see that impacting your approach or your role as a trustee? And how would you advocate for JCCC at the state level? 60 seconds for Carlton Abner.
Yeah, I think the good, the Johnson County Community College is perfectly positioned to have conversations with the governor because the governor cares about some of the same things, right? Like what are the jobs and the needs that the state needs right now and how can Johnson County Community College help that governor fill those needs? I think the DeSoto Plant is a perfect example of what you've seen in when this entity can work with the legislator, legislation as well as the governor. That being said, I would also very strongly be in favor of retaining, as folks have mentioned, local control of the, and that's a very important thing for this county. It is the resource that it is because it belongs to the county, it belongs to this community. And when we own it, when we have ownership of it, we tend to do much better with taking care of it. And we know how best to be the caretakers of that, of this very valuable resource. And so that definitely would be one of the other things that I'd be a huge proponent for.
Chad Carroll, how would you advocate for JCCC at the state level? Do you see a new governor impacting that at all during your tenure if you're elected?
Yes, I believe that the new governor and new legislators would impact that. We have to ensure that we're, you know, whether we're going down, sending letters or meeting with the Johnson County delegation and the governor to help them understand the impact that Johnson County Community College has, not only within the county, but within the entire state. And we have to show them facts and figures and help them, you know, get on board with agreeing that we need to invest within Johnson County Community College because it will return to us tenfold.
Jerry Charlton, how would you advocate for JCCC at the state level? What would be your approach?
Lee Cross mentioned earlier that, you know, the Community College charter was supposed to provide a third of the funding from the state level. And I understand what Lee said, it's maybe a half of that. That's where I would start in demanding that we have those funds. Maybe it's a compromise that the school works with the state government, they'll give us the additional funding that they're supposed to be. And instead of appropriating money for the college, we implement a budget process for all the different programs that, you know, the school supports.
Lee Cross, the question, how would you advocate for JCCC in Topeka? What would your approach be?
Well, I think our approach generally has just been to have relationships with everyone. I agree with Mr. Abner and really much of what's been said so far, that the governor and we are going to share similar priorities. And just because I don't get along with Jerry Moran doesn't mean I didn't used to live in his home county and my mother grew up in the same place. So having a relationship in the tiny village of Kansas is a better way to live. And in my time, we've invited every U.S. Senator. I was here when we had a previous U.S. representative and our current U.S. delegation comes to campus, which is helpful because they supply much of what the state needs. So we supply 40% of the budget to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. We lobby and we have to. Just because the governor is a friend of mine doesn't mean she doesn't understand community college funding. And we've had to fight for that money because a lot of community colleges are not in counties that voted for her. So we had to fight for that. And so it means having relationships with everyone and I think recognizing talent at this table that we should be in pretty good hands going forward, so.
Mark Hamel, how do you advocate for JCCC at the state level? And just take a microphone and yeah, turn it towards you.
Yes, thank you. So I have a friend who always uses the quote, you need to be reminded more than you need to be taught. And there's definitely some truth to that. And that's one of the things that I do. I have a lot of relationships with people that affect our budgets up in Topeka and I try to remind them how important the college is and how important it is to me and how it affects our community. Because when they're off doing other things, they're focusing on, I need to make sure they never forget that and what Johnson County does for them. And, you know, obviously it's critical for the development of the state. One of the things that happened here recently was the Kansas Promise Scholarship. And that was another partnership we have with the state and an ex-trustee really helped that, Molly Baumgartner, helped promote that. It's a great scholarship and it's a great way to make sure that the benefit of those students graduating work in the state where they got the education at the great cost. So it lets Kansas know they are getting a return on their investment as well.
And Molly taught me to raise BASFA applications.
Yeah, there you go. So it's one of the things, we do a lot of, try to do everything we can to partner with Topeka and do the best thing for not only Johnson County, but for the state as well when we're working through these programs.
Jeff Holton, explain your approach to advocating for JCCC at the state level in Topeka.
Yep. So relationships matter. So having those relationships is important. And I think I could be an advocate for Johnson County Community College from that standpoint and being open to conversations with everyone, right? And then I think telling the story, right? So if we're not telling the appropriate story, then we're not going to move people. And we have to tell that story often and often and often. And that story is, you know, if you look at the, you know, the study that was done by Lightcast, we are returning a lot of value, a lot of dollars. We've got skilled workers. We've got all this awesome stuff that's happening. Our property values are going up, we're bringing in businesses. Those are the stories that we need to tell because we have a formula here. We have a formula here. So investing in us here is investing in the greater, the greater state of Kansas.
And Dawn Ratan, finish up this question, how would you advocate or how do you advocate for JCCC in Topeka?
Well, of course, we all agree that in a perfect world, we would get a third of our funding from the state, but we do not. The work is to make sure that our legislators know that JCCC is special. We have, we have somewhere in the teens, the number of community colleges across the state, but we are different structurally, geographically, and just how we operate. And so as you mentioned, we've got to tell that story. We've got to give them, make it personalized and see that they see that the impact on an individual as well as the impact on our community in that we have articulated and calculated how much we impact this community in terms of dollars. So we've got to keep telling that story. Invite the legislators here, provide them with data. We also make sure when we go to our annual Community College Trustee Conference in DC, that we go see those national lawmakers as well and try to influence them and let them know what some of our needs are and that we also appreciate the work they do.
Well, very mindful of time, we're coming up on an hour and 25 minutes. So I'm going to go to the last question. I know we had a lot of great questions that I'm not able to get to. I do appreciate the audience submitting so many. There are also some key issues that I kind of saved and reserved because you're also going to be answering questionnaires for us that will publish the weeks before elections. So some key issues like AI and academic freedom and enrollment that I didn't quite get to, but those issues will be coming. And if you want to see these candidates' stances on those issues, look for those in the post in the weeks leading up to the election. But the last question for this forum, we'll start with Chad Carroll. Kind of a closing statement, if you will, but tell the people in this room as well as those watching online, what qualifies you for this job? What distinguishes you from these other candidates? In essence, why should they vote for you? And 60 seconds for all of you to end this out.
Okay. I am a community college graduate, as I mentioned, so I understand the value that community college can bring to the surrounding area. Our daughter actually is enrolled at JCCC just because it is an amazing institution. So she's starting her college career there. As I mentioned earlier, I've been in the financial industry for over 13 years and I've had a decade of leadership experience, just leading teams and departments through system migrations, mergers, acquisitions, all while managing, you know, budgets and working across numerous departments to reach these goals. I've been very, very involved in our community. I've worked with KC Scholars as a scholarship essay reviewer, Prep KC, I was a member of their engagement committee, a recent graduate last spring of the Johnson County Academy, and I was appointed to the steering committee for the Olathe Comprehensive Plan.
Jerry Charlton, what distinguishes you from the other people up here? Why should people vote for you for JCCC trustee?
As a professional engineer and general contractor approaching the twilight of a wonderful career, passionate about what I do for my career, I mentioned that earlier, I want to share that passion with our students. You know, we're looking at, like I mentioned before, that the number one hiring jobs are analytical and technical and I bring that to the table. One quick story that I added to, it was a statement I added to the faculty advisors' questionnaire for the prior forum. In a classroom, you know, going, it changed the course of my life, my junior year, fall semester, where I started taking my design courses. The professor associated with the curriculum, a multi-year study that assessed incoming freshmen and their creative aptitude. And it kept track of them until they graduated. And the multi-year study indicated that the students are losing their creative aptitude. That was a gut punch to me and this is a message to the students, you know, if I'm able to convey a message. Ask questions. That's what I did. When that, when the professor conveyed that message, it was a gut punch to me and I started be, I became a better student. I was a good student, I became a better student just because I started asking questions.
Lee Cross, what distinguishes you? Why should people vote for you?
I think I have a good sense of humor. I keep needling Mark Hamel to throw him off and he just keeps performing.
I will need to separate you guys if we ever do a forum in the future.
I will say, I've called myself the Crash Davis of Kansas politics. I, I'm running for the seat again and I love it. The truth is, I haven't tried to do anything else and I love being here. It's been good for my career and for my family. I have 18 years of being a lawyer, I've run my own business for 15, and now I have three businesses I help run. 12 years as a trustee, I think you can ask around and I can be obnoxious or annoying from time to time, but I do build relationships and I, you can ask trustee Hamel, I'm every Republican's favorite Democrat to have a drink with. So I love the college, it's been very good to my family. I'd appreciate your support, honor before November 4th. And crossforthecollege.com is my website.
Mark Hamel, what distinguishes you? Why should people vote for you?
Thank you. I started my college career at Johnson County Community College and I graduated from Johnson County Community College and it changed my life. I went on to a four-year institution. I've had a career in construction, food and beverage, and retail management. And I'll tell you, it gives me a really unique perspective across the college, allows me to really dig into a lot of different things and ask the really deep questions that a lot of people don't have those experiences, they're more one-dimensional in some of these areas. I'll tell you, one of the biggest things that really differentiates me also is that I was a union member at one point in time. I think it's an important aspect to understand and know when you're dealing with the Faculty Association, understand how the union actually works. I think that differentiates me. And I'll say, go to my website, markhamelforjccc.com.
Jeff Holton, what distinguishes you? Why should people vote for you?
Okay. So as I mentioned in my opening, I have owned my own business for 25 years and I think the basic things that we need to have as board members are the ability to manage people, approve budgets, set policy, and plan strategically. And I don't think my business would have been around for 25 years if I wasn't doing those things pretty, pretty well. Aside from that, as I've talked about several times today, I am drawn to the mission of Johnson County Community College to inspire learning, to transform lives, and strengthen communities. I came from serving three years on the KCK School Board's Education Foundation, Education Foundation Board. So I have this affinity towards education. So I believe in it, I'm a believer in people and process, I enjoy relationships, and I want to meet people where they are and have conversations leading to a positive impact on their lives. I enjoy making fun and lasting memories that become the stories that are told. What I can promise you is that I will wake up every day in the service of others.
If we can finish the thought, if you had one more thing to say?
No, I was just going to say, a vote for Jeff Holton will guarantee that. That's it. So, let's go.
Dawn Ratan, the same question to you.
I have about five categories. First, I'll say my results. Our school, as I've been a trustee, our school has grown. We have kept tuition at a low rate. We've continued to reduce the mill levy, we've hired a new president, and we've had enormous stability in our school. Second is my platform. Protect access and affordability, advocate everywhere for JCCC, support innovation and agility, keep students at the center of every decision and continue to foster stability and continuity in uncertain terms. Then when I go to my skills, as a trained engineer, business owner, and I love working in the community, if you know me, that has led to me being a database problem solver. I bring people together. Sometimes my nickname is the connector. I have attention to details. I can work across every type of person and come to consensus. I think that we have balanced our fiscal responsibility with student success and I have a strong network. I'd like to add that I am endorsed by several community leaders and I'll add all those to my website, and my personal passion and experience for education and continuous learning.
And come back to this side of the table for one last closing, Carlton Abner, what distinguishes you? What, why should people vote for you for this race?
Yeah, I want to first say, having done this twice with you all, what a distinguished panel. It is, it's rare to see folks as informed and passionate about this. So I appreciate the question because yeah, you do need to find a distinguishing part. As a business owner, as a doctor-prepared professional working in education, I think I've got some distinguishing qualities. I've been in adult ed my entire life. Those are things that I can bring to the, to the college that I'm looking forward to working with. The other thing is I began my career as a nurse. Nurses, their foundation professional model is one of advocacy. And so I am also going to be coming as an advocate for you, the people, residents of Johnson County. That means making sure that this retains its appeal as a great resource, but also an affordable resource for you and the students. So I'm looking forward to doing that advocacy and bringing my, my current experiences in higher ed to Johnson County Community College and appreciate your support in doing so.
So these seven candidates, plus there is an eighth one, Kenny Stokes, wasn't able to make it here tonight. So of those eight candidates, again, the top four vote-getters will win seats. So you will be able to vote for four when you go on November 4th. So give these candidates a big round of applause. But thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much for watching and we do appreciate it. And watch all of our forums from now until November 4th.
Thank you.